I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. Did everybody cut their cell phones off? The meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Alvin Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Teles.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams is absent today. Councilwoman Worthy.
I'm here.
Back.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we give you the thanks and the praise for our opportunity to gather here today, the freedom that you provided and the men and women are providing even today around this world. We just pray that you'll bless them as we enter into this season of not only Thanksgiving but of celebration of your son, Jesus, as the greatest gift ever given. We pray that God will be mindful of that, bless his council with wisdom and knowledge in the decisions they have to make today, continue to keep your hand on the mayor and his staff. Thank you for this great city. We'll give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Education and Recreation Committee work session and the council meeting that was held December 3rd. Clerk, will you take the vote?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of November the 29th through the 5th, December the 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations. Unfinished business, assessing nuisance abatements lien for property for grass cutting for $341.50 on property at 1028 Peyton Ridge in District 1. This is Charles A. Pruitt Jr. in care of Jan Pruitt is the last known owners and this was tabled, but this has already been paid. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering the abatement of nuisance on property at 2619 East Broad Street in District 1 and the last known owners are Ronnie Pollak, Community Home, Bank, Inc., and investors. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed our case. This is a partially burned house and we filed it in August. There've been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in August. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council? I move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 106 Elmore Street in District 2, Regina K. Lawson and Tanya H. Bogle being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Madam President, based on recent improvements, we're asking that this case be tabled for 30 days. Thank you.
All right. I saw some, did you want to speak? Okay, all right.
Make a motion that we table for 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 123 Penn Drive in District 4, and this is the State of Alabama, the right of redemption of Charlotte Turman and Linda Riggins being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Madam President, based on recent improvements, we're also asking this case be tabled for 30 days. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to table for 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1015 Third Avenue in District 5. This is Delphine E. Blake and family in savings, credit union being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this? If you'll come to the podium over here and give your name and address, please.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Delphine Blake. I'm the owner of the property, 1015 Third Avenue, and I've had some work done on it, what I could afford it. But I recently was accepted into a program called Rebuild Gaston, and they're gonna put a roof on my house. And they're doing it by volunteers only, and the volunteers have done, they have done two houses, and mine's is the fourth one on the list, and they are working on the third one now, and I'm next in line. So I ask for some more time, please.
Okay. Have you had a conversation with Mr. Harbison, the building?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Blake, do you have any idea of the timeline of when they'll get to your house?
Well, I talked to the lady this morning and she said hopefully in two weeks.
Okay.
They'll be ready to start.
Okay.
Is this a program running through the church on Sanstam Avenue?
Yes.
I've witnessed two of those roofs they've already put on. They do a real good job. And like she says, they're all volunteers with this program. And I think the third one they're working on now is on Sheehan, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, correct. It's a trailer.
So I think they've got all the material on the ground there, if I'm not mistaken, on that project there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harbison, anyone speak in favor?
Well, I did have a conversation with Blake prior to the council meeting, and I'm not opposed to the case being tabled for 30 days. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion. We table this for 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1703 Pierce Avenue in District 5, and this is Tanya Celeste Egan, rights of redemption of tax sale purchases prior to Tanya Egan, Elizabeth Sue Fulmer, and right of redemption of title holder before the sales tax, Patty Obar, and Margaret in favor of America Quest Mari's Company being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in April of this year. There've been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in April, but no work has been done on that. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 205 Mountain Drive in District 7, and this is George Walzick and Larry Willis being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? If you'll give your name and address, please.
Luther Abel, I'm Larry Willis's attorney.
Okay.
We've met with Mr. Harbison this morning about what he wants done, and Mr. Willis didn't realize that he was fussing about what he was fussing about. We'd ask for 30 days and we'll get it straightened up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a vehicle, trash and debris stored in front of the house. We have received numerous complaints in the past few months. We've actually had five separate, I'm sorry, seven separate cases on this property in the last few years. We're asking today that a resolution be passed. We certainly do not object to Mr. Willis having the opportunity to clean up and rectify the situation, but due to the length of time, we've been working the case, and a number of cases there, and the similarity of these cases, we're asking for a resolution to be passed. Thank you.
Ask a question.
Yes.
Mr. Harbison, if we pass this and will they have time to do what they said they would do within 30 days and then there'd be no consequences at that point?
If we have some reason, we'll time to do that. Yeah, what needs to be done can be done in a matter of days.
Okay, thanks.
I'd talk with Mr. Harbison and Attorney Abel, and it'd be at least two to three weeks for him to even do anything anyway, so that would give him two or three weeks, at least there.
But if the resolution is passed, it's the understanding that if it's not done, then we will have the right to go on the property to do it. So how long you said this has been? You've been working on this case?
This particular case started in April. We've had seven cases in the past.
Okay, okay, all right. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate with understanding that the owners will have time to correct the issue on their own before we take any action.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
May I add that this gentleman that's owned this piece, got this piece of property. Before it got there, this property looked like that. That stuff has been there a pretty good while, from other owner that owned it. So I think he probably just inherited that stuff.
Okay. Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement for demolition on property located at 1502 Robertson Avenue in District 2, the State of Alabama airs of Sonora Taylor in care of Sidney Taylor being the last known owners. The amount is $3,091.40. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this? Is there one to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement for the lien for demolition of property located at 921 Holly Street in District 5, R.R. Simmons and the State of Alabama being the last known owners, and the amount is $3,616.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
Madam President, if I could have a point of privilege here, just because these next four line items are all in District 5, I want to make it clear what we've been doing prior to this is talking about current nuisance issues that we're trying to encourage citizens to clean up and get under control. These following demolition liens are for properties that we've already torn down, and now we're filing a lien against that property to help offset the costs that the city incurred when we had to go down there and tear the property down ourselves. And the one thing I want everybody to notice, if you look on our agenda, every single one of these properties under the list of previous owners, you will see State of Alabama listed. What that means is these properties are no longer even owned per se by the individuals. They've been acquired by the state due to failure to pay back taxes. So this is not, in all likelihood, this is not an expense that is going to be levied on an individual because this property's already been abandoned and give to the state. So when you see these $3,000, $3,600 liens that we're putting on property, these are properties that have already long since been abandoned, and we've already torn them down, and we put those liens on the property in hopes that one day, if somebody does want to buy that property from the state, then the city would recoup the expense that we incurred to tear the property down in the first place. So that's what we're doing. I just want everybody to know. And having said that, I make a motion that we would apply the lien.
Second.
And may I add to that before we vote on it? We've got more in these pieces of property than anybody would probably ever give us for it.
Correct.
And where there are, we hardly ever win on anything like this.
So we're doing number 16?
Yes, that's 16, 921 Holly Street.
Okay. Do I have a motion? We had the second.
Yes, we had a motion and a second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
There's no more houses in District 5. The next one is at 1109 P Street, Street in District 5, and this is the right of redemption of Susan Chivani being the last known owners, and this amount is $2,866.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next lien assessment of nuisance abatement is 911 South 15th Street, which is in District 5. It's State of Alabama subject to possible right of redemption by Rodney Wright being the last known owners. The amount is $3,241.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien for demolition on property located at 905 Spru Street in District 5, and this is the State of Alabama, Joe R. Hope and Ernest D. Cordell being the last known owners. The amount is $3,666.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this? Is there anyone to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business?
Yes, Madam President. I have one request from the Engineering Department. It's a document of resolution authorizing tender and lease agreement with Bob Smith Construction Incorporated and NGM Insurance Company to complete the remaining work under the original contract on the East Gaston Community Center for the $5,215,158.3. Ask for unanimous consent.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider this resolution as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I was gonna let.
Yes.
Okay.
Attorney.
The city engineer and I are glad to put this one to rest. This involves the East Gaston Community Center. The history is, the original bid was, what, five million, five and a half, five and a half million? And unfortunately, during the project, during the onset of the project, initial phases of the project, work stopped. And with all public construction projects, we have a surety. The contractor is required to have the project bonded by a surety company. So when the work stopped, we engaged the surety company to step in and help us finish the project. The surety company, NGM Insurance Company, stepped in. They have secured another contractor that is familiar with our city engineer and has a good past working relationship with. And we've entered into an agreement on how we're gonna finish the project. And things have run, we've had to dot some i's and cross some t's, but for the most part, things have run pretty smoothly. And I appreciate the bonding company working with us. Right now, on the money that we budgeted for this project, we had remaining roughly $3.5 million, which we had not spent. Now, the project to be completed is going to cost a little over $5.2 million. The bonding company is going to cover the difference. So, and what that means is assuming there's no further hiccups, hiccups out there, this project will be completed without any further spending of taxpayer money. And in addition, we recovered additional sums of money as liquidated damages, which hopefully will help offset additional architectural fees and maybe some unexpected cost. So this is, and according to the agreement, the contractor's going to have a year to finish the project, but he has told us that he will be able to hopefully finish this project well before a year. So this is good news.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Madam President. I have a resolution authorizing a memo of understanding between various counties and the GECEMA regarding the Everbridge by Safewear. It's my understanding that the Edwark County, as well as the surrounding counties, utilize this during emergency situations to, for communication and coordination. So this will be an agreement that the City of Gaston will sign, Gaston Edwark County EMA will sign, and this will allow DeKalb County, Marshall County, Lauderdale County, Calhoun County, Cleburne County, and Morgan County to all exist under our agreement with Everbridge, and they will reimburse us proportionately for their cost of the total expense to provide this service. So I make a motion that we, for immediate consideration of this.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, do we, any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards, remarks by mayor and council. Mayor? Councilwoman Worthy?
Yes, I have something. Thank you. I'm gonna make an announcement. On the Christmas parade, Carver Christmas Parade will be this Saturday, December the 14th. Parade starts at 6 o'clock, 6 p.m. And if you are in the parade, I asked you to line up at 5 o'clock at the Old Goodyear Warehouse. And I want to talk about something we discussed up in pre-council about the lights on Tuscaloosa Avenue. Now, the mayor had said a couple weeks ago that they would fix the lights, and I thanked them here at the council meeting for doing so. Now, we don't have the money to fix the lights. And we didn't have any problems voting $70,000 to fix the lights down here at the Spirit Monument. We didn't have a problem, and I voted for it. But now, it's been over two years, the first resolution came up in 2018 to fix the lights on Tuscaloosa Avenue. We have 19 lights that's out from Henry Street to 10th Street. We're still paying the bill on those lights. It wasn't, it won't pay off until 2025. I'm not sure exactly how much money we pay every month, only lights. But I just don't understand. We can find money for any project that we want to have, except for doing something in District 3. And all I'm asking is that we come up with the money, and we shouldn't have to wait for a new budget, because we've asked this, for the lights to be put in the budget since 2018, every year. Thank you.
I'll come back. Councilman Bass.
Thank you, Madam President. In our city, a few days ago, we had a situation where it required a lot of our police resources, city, county, and just wanted to draw attention that it had a very happy ending. And Officer Mitchell James, who's in the back of the room today, played a very large part in that in the hostage-type negotiation-type scene. I don't guess it was a hostage, but, right, yeah, that was, so thank you very much, and I just want to recognize you for your work. That's, you know, that's when preparation and practice and hard work all comes together at the same time, is what you exhibited, your calm behavior and your professionalism and the way to take a really potential bad situation and has a happy outcome. So thank you, Officer James, for your work on that day. All right, that's all I have.
Councilman Wilson?
I just want to give a special congratulations to everybody involved with the Community Thanksgiving Program. It's my understanding that there was a record number of meals served this year at the Community Thanksgiving. I think it was 6,700 meals provided. That was, that was a great event, and it's always, what I understand, to be one of the largest events of its kind in the State of Alabama. So that was fantastic. And also, kudos to everybody at the Qantas Club for what was a fantastic midday Christmas parade. I thought it was, it was great. The streets were packed, and everybody did a great job. So that's all I have.
Councilman Cannon?
I'd like to congratulate Mitch also. This is the second time in, I know, five or six years that Mitch has had to come to a rescue in District 6. Once, it was over by Dwight Baptist Church. I think that was maybe four years ago. And then this one yesterday. I was down at this one yesterday in the afternoon. They did a terrific job. No one was hurt. Everybody got out and on. So I appreciate you, Mitch, for doing what you did. Yeah, when I came by there yesterday and stopped, I think there was about six or seven there, still there.
Okay. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. On the Carver Museum deal, it wasn't in the budget. I didn't know it was in there when I said we could do it. It'll have to wait till the next budget, and that's what most everybody up here agrees on. That's why we always do it. So there's, I made a mistake, I'm saying that. But I will say this, to portray me as not being anything for Carver, we've put over $2 million in that whole strip since I've been in office. And I inherited a lot of that about the lights, and we've still been paying for them. We've done the rec center, we are conditioned to... We air conditioned the gym and built a new gym. We did the Carver Museum, the all the way down the street, Carver out front, the, what you call it out there, the landscape and all. We do stuff over there all the time and I'm glad to do that, just like any other part of town. But it's not in the budget and it'll have to wait. So it wasn't like I said, okay, we'll do it. And I backed out. I didn't back out. I didn't know it was in the budget. But $2 million over there, don't tell me we're not trying to take care of that part of town too. And I had nothing to do with the monument down there. That was done way before I got in office.
Hey, ma'am, can I ask you a question? This is kind of pertaining to that, not. That center over there, I think it's behind Drake over in there. Did we sell that or leased that? I can't remember how that.
About the big building?
Yes, sir.
Remodeling? No. The council, they wanted us to give it to the Quality of Life and y'all wanted to do that and I agreed with it and we gave it to them. And I don't know that they've ever done some of the things. They were talking about doing remodeling and doing some of these things, but I don't know. I hadn't heard anything on it since.
Do we have a stipulation then when we gave it to them, so much time?
I'd have to see.
What I was going to be doing. I couldn't remember. I couldn't buy there and I didn't like it. Because there it was a set and that's why I was just wondering about it.
If there's nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.